If you would open us with prayer, please.
Thank you for waking us all up this morning and starting us out our way. Lord, you put a roof on our head, and for this we also want to say thank you. Heavenly Father, this evening, if you will just put protection around us. Lord, help us to engage in any kind of conversation, Lord, that is on children. Heavenly Father, this evening for those who are still going through the heat, add them with their help, because all of our help come from you. We can't do it in our hands. Heavenly Father, not for a lone prayer, but for the other hearts. We just want to say thank you today. And for this, you give you all the honor and glory that is due you. And for Jesus, we count it all done. Amen.
Call to Curscho County School Board of Trustees meeting to order. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? Properly motioned by Mr... Oh, God, help me. Properly motioned by, I'm drawing a blank on your name, Jean. Thank you. Wow. And seconded by Ms. Furnas. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, that's unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda approving the... Properly motioned by Coach Blackman, seconded by Mr. Jean. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. I want to thank each and every one for gathering this evening. Also, Bill Rozier with the Curscho County Current, and all of those in whom are doing such a lovely job throughout the district. Thank you for being here. On public forum, we do not have anyone that have signed up that moves us down to our old and new business. At this time, I think that's Becky.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board. It's that time of the year where we get the policy manual update from the School Boards Association. So over the next few meetings, we'll be bringing you some updates as recommended by the School Boards Association. And tonight, I'm bringing you first the information, just for information, policies related to the live streaming of board meetings. In response to the newly passed law, which is 591985, we are revising Policy BE and proposing a new policy BEA. Effective January 1st, 2026, all local school boards and charter school boards are required to make reasonable efforts to ensure that all meetings subject to FOIA are open to the public and live streams. The new law is intended to enhance transparency and engagement by requiring school boards to provide real-time access and to publish recordings promptly. The law states, under the new law, all board meetings, whether regular, special called, or workshops, must be accessible. And as you know, we already live stream our board meetings here. However, this will change our finance and facilities meetings, because we do notice those under FOIA, because they're a committee of the whole. We will need to live stream those meetings as well. So we've begun getting some quotes and different things to outfit our room that we normally hold the finance and facilities meeting in. And so we will be working on that and keep you posted. Once our revised live stream policies are updated, we must submit it to the State Superintendent of Education within 30 days, according to the law. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Becky? Thank you. Next, we have Ray Ferris, if you would come. Board Policy Review.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board. Tonight's policy updates are in response to guidance from the 2025 South Carolina School Boards Association Policy and Legislative Manual. The proposed policy updates are based on federal, state, education-related legislature court cases, or Department of Ed guidance. We're bringing you these updates tonight as information. The first policy is a new policy, JHE. Education Excused Absences for Career and Technical Student Organization Experiences. Lawmakers have formally authorized school districts to excuse student absences for participation in certain career and technical student organizations, CTSO, activities. Under the new law, school districts must adopt a policy allowing students to be excused from school trips up to 10 days per academic year to take part in CTSO-related activities. These experiences must be supervised by a certified teacher and serve as opportunities to assess students' technical and career-related competencies. Qualifying activities include organized competitions or exhibitions, such as those held by state-level Future Farmers of America organizations and the National FFA organization, as well as 4H programs. The law specifically recognizes these as acceptable CTSO events, but also permits similar experiences that meet the same criteria. Students and their parents or legal guardians are responsible for ensuring that all missed academic work is obtained and completed in accordance with the school policy during these excused absences. We're proposing the new policy in accordance with the new state law and with recommendations from the SC SBA model policy. And so you'll see Policy JHE for your reference. The next policy we're bringing is a revision to Policy GH, Student Absences and Excuses, essentially updating that policy to reflect the policy I just proposed. And then the third policy is GH-R, which is Student Absences and Excuses. The policy revision updates our policy to include the career and technical student organization experiences. So at this time, I'll be happy to talk about those three, if you have any questions.
Questions?
Okay. The fourth policy that we're bringing is JFABC. Or JFABC as for transfer students. At the start of the 2025 legislative session, lawmakers began considering changes to the administration, eligibility, funding, and oversight of the Education Scholarship Trust Fund Program. Specifically, Section 59-8-170 of the South Carolina Code was amended, which states a student transferring from one public high school to another public high school in grades nine through 11, or from one public middle school to another public middle school in grades six through eight pursuant to this program is not subject to any prohibition by the South Carolina High School League on a transfer student from participating in an interscholastic sport upon transfer. After the initial transfer, any subsequent transfer by the student to another public school shall be subject to the South Carolina High School League eligibility rules. At this time, we're only revising the athletics section of JFABC in response to this section of the Act, because the Act directs the State Department of Education to develop regulations, guidance, and procedures for inter-district transfers. We have made no further changes at this time. However, it will become necessary to amend this policy in the future once guidance is received from the State Department of Education. And then the final policy is JFABC-E. It is an exhibit of this transfer policy. I've made several changes to that form to make it easier for administrators and parents, myself, to communicate, such as adding an email line, adding a place for administrators to write reasons that they're denying a student or accepting a student, if I need to know that. And so the fifth thing is I'm bringing that to you for review as well. Are there any questions on those two that you'd like me to answer?
No questions.
Okay. And then lastly, I've received a request from International Experience, i.e. to be an approved foreign exchange student organization. According to Board Policy JFABB, admission of exchange and foreign students, the organization must meet certain requirements. I have reviewed the information this organization has provided me, and it meets the standards established by the policy. They have been granted a full listing by the Council of Standards for International Educational Travel, CSIET, and are a nonprofit J1 visa program. Thus, our schools are not responsible for this exchange student's visa. They have a screening process for students and host families. They require medical coverage for students before they are approved, and they require host families to provide medical and emergency types of travel for students. I have provided the requests from i.e. to the board, as well as information they've sent to me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about that organization, if you have any.
Are there any questions? Policy JFABB is before us properly for action? Exchange students, that's it? Yes. Again, the policy that's in our package, JFABB, for exchange of foreign student policy is before us. Would need a motion.
So the exchange student's not a policy. It's just the approval that we can partner with them and allow them to offer exchange students for us, for our district.
Okay.
This is the organization that we've always dealt with, is that correct?
Ma'am?
Isn't this the organization that we've always been dealing with in the past?
Yes, I think this is the third one that I've brought before you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know for a fact that by knowing him, Mr. Ferris has conducted complete due diligence with regard to the viability of this entity. So I make a motion we approve it as presented.
I do make a motion we approve it as presented. Okay. Properly motioned by Dr. King, seconded by Coach Blackman, and discussions or questions? Here are none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
To the polls. And that's done. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chairman's report. Dr. King has an update for us from the School of Law Conference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the recent opportunity to attend the School Law Conference in Charleston, South Carolina. It's always one of my favorites. Back in the day when I was an adjunct professor, that's the primary course that I taught was school law, and we all had to do that as administrators. I know you will recall taking that course at some point in time. I'll try. This is a short and sweet conference, basically just a day and a half, all day on a Saturday, part of the day on a Sunday. But you start out by some general sessions of federal law updates, providing insight into what's happening in the federal legal landscape, from POTUS all the way through Congress, and how that can change. And with regard to regulatory changes, laws affecting us all the way down to a local school district in one of our states, and then court decisions that have impacted K-12 recently in our public school setting. The next general session was an overview of developments and changes, what's still in the air regarding what's always a hot topic, and that's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea. It doesn't evolve a whole bunch, but there are seemingly always updates to that, because the landscape does change. And it's important for us to realize the impact that that particular law has on our students with disabilities, and how it's just so of penultimate importance for us to take care of that cadre of kids. Some breakout sessions occurred in the afternoon, employee matters, investigations, Freedom of Information Act, which is always a hot topic with school boards and any other elected body.
We will need to livestream those meetings as well. So we've begun getting some quotes and different things to outfit our room that we normally hold the finance and facilities meeting in, and so we will be working on that and keep you posted. Once our revised livestream policies are updated, we must submit it to the State Superintendent of Education within 30 days, according to the law. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Becky? Thank you. Next, we have Ray Ferris, Fuertcom, Board Policy Review.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board. Tonight's policy updates are in response to guidance from the 2025 South Carolina School Boards Association Policy and Legislative Manual. The proposed policy updates are based on federal, state, education-related legislature, court cases, or Department of Ed guidance. We're bringing you these updates tonight as information. The first policy is a new policy, JHE, Education Excused Absences for Career and Technical Student Organization Experiences. Lawmakers have formally authorized school districts to excuse student absences for participation in certain career and technical student organizations' CTSO activities. Under the new law, school districts must adopt a policy allowing students to be excused from school trips up to 10 days per academic year to take part in CTSO-related activities. These experiences must be supervised by a certified teacher and serve as opportunities to assess students' technical and career-related competencies. Qualifying activities include organized competitions or exhibitions, such as those held by state-level Future Farmers of America organizations and the National FFA organization, as well as 4H programs. The law specifically recognizes these as acceptable CTSO events, but also permits similar experiences that meet the same criteria. Students and their parents or legal guardians are responsible for ensuring that all missed academic work is obtained and completed in accordance with the school policy during these excused absences. We're proposing the new policy in accordance with the new state law and with recommendations from the SC SBA model policy. And so you'll see policy JHE for your reference. The next policy we're bringing is a revision to policy JH, Student Absences and Excuses, essentially updating that policy to reflect the policy I just proposed. And then the third policy is JH-R, which is Student Absences and Excuses. The policy revision updates our policy to include the career and technical student organization experiences. So at this time, I'll be happy to talk about those three if you have any questions. Okay. The fourth policy that we're bringing is JFABC dash, or JFABC as Transfer Students. At the start of the 2025 legislative session, lawmakers began considering changes to the administration eligibility funding and oversight of the Education Scholarship Trust Fund Program. Specifically, Section 59-8-170 of the South Carolina Code was amended, which states a student transferring from one public high school to another public high school in grades nine through 11, or from one public middle school to another public middle school in grades six through eight pursuant to this program is not subject to any prohibition by the South Carolina High School League on a transfer student from participating in an interscholastic sport upon transfer. After the initial transfer, any subsequent transfer by the student to another public school shall be subject to the South Carolina High School League eligibility rules. At this time, we're only revising the Athletics section of JFABC in response to this section of the Act because the Act directs the State Department of Education to develop regulations, guidance, and procedures for inter-district transfers. We have made no further changes at this time. However, it will become necessary to amend this policy in the future once guidance is received from the State Department of Education. And then the final policy is JFABC-E. It is an exhibit of this transfer policy. I've made several changes to that form to make it easier for administrators and parents and myself to communicate, such as adding an email line, adding a place for administrators to write reasons that they're denying a student or accepting a student if I need to know that. And so the fifth thing is I'm bringing that to you for review as well. Are there any questions on those two that you would like me to answer?
No questions.
Okay. And then lastly, I've received a request from International Experience, i.e., to be an approved foreign exchange student organization. According to Board Policy, JFABB, Admission of Exchange in Foreign Students, the organization must meet certain requirements. I have reviewed the information this organization has provided me, and it meets the standards established by the policy. They have been granted a full listing by the Council of Standards for International Educational Travel, CSIET, and are a nonprofit J1 visa program. Thus, our schools are not responsible for this exchange student's visa. They have a screening process for students and host families. They require medical coverage for students before they are approved, and they require host families to provide medical and emergency types of travel for students. I have provided the requests from i.e. to the board, as well as information they've sent to me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about that organization if you have any.
Are there any questions? Policy JFABB is before us, properly for action. Exchange students. Yes. Again, the policy that's in our package, JFABB, for exchange of foreign student policy is before us. We need a motion.
So the exchange student's not a policy, it's just the approval that we can partner with them and allow them to offer exchange students for us, for our district.
Okay.
This is the organization that we've always dealt with, is that correct?
Ma'am?
Isn't this the organization that we've always been dealing with in the past?
Yes, I think this is the third one that I brought before you.
Yes.
I know for a fact, by knowing him, Mr. Ferris has conducted complete due diligence with regard to the viability of this entity, so I make a motion we approve it as presented.
Okay. Proper motion by Dr. King, second by Coach Blackman. Any discussions or questions? Here are none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye to the polls. And that's done. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chairman's report. Dr. King has an update for us from the School of Law Conference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the recent opportunity to attend the School Law Conference in Charleston, South Carolina. It's always one of my favorites. Back in the day when I was an adjunct professor, that's the primary course that I taught was school law, and we all had to do that as administrators, I know you will recall, taking that course at some point in time. I'll try. This is a short and sweet conference, basically just a day and a half, all day on a Saturday, part of the day on a Sunday. And you start out by some general sessions of federal law updates, providing insight into what's happening in the federal legal landscape, from POTUS all the way through Congress and how that can change, and with regard to regulatory changes, laws affecting us all the way down to a local school district in one of our states, and then court decisions that have impacted K-12 recently in our public school setting. The next general session was an overview of developments and changes, what's still in the air regarding what's always a hot topic, and that's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea. It doesn't evolve a whole bunch, but there are seemingly always updates to that because the landscape does change, and it's important for us to realize the impact that that particular law has on our students with disabilities and how it's just so of penultimate importance for us to take care of that cadre of kids. Some breakout sessions occurred in the afternoon, employee matters, investigations, Freedom of Information Act, which is always a hot topic with school boards and any other elected body. And even at the school level, you guys have to interact with those, and I'm talking to principals specifically from time to time, as well as district office staff. One big thing that happens a lot nowadays, especially as social media is so prevalent, is a lot of times we get, well, lambasted, but sometimes we also get allegations made toward us, not necessarily impropriety, but things we should or should not do, may or may not have done. And there was a good session on how to respond to those and how we can counteract those kind of allegations. And it's simply, it's simple, y'all. It's complying with school board policy and complying with the law. As long as we do that, we're going to be, we're going to be in good shape. As you all know, official intelligence is a huge talking point in education right now and how it is involved in our schools day to day. I think one thing we probably did, or the state did, I actually wasn't completely in favor of it at the time, was when we passed the cell phone ban in our school setting. That probably helped a lot with quelling a use of AI for certain projects, tests, whatever. But it also is a continuing conundrum for school districts to have to deal with that, and even more so now, probably at the higher education level. And then the last thing we talked about was the next state legislative cycle and how that's going to impact K-12. Not a lot of hot button topics out in the forefront right now, but to backtrack to the session right before that, which was probably one of the more emotional sessions I've ever sat in on one of these conferences, Representative Brandon Guffey from Union, was it, Dr. Goodwin, I think it's from Union area? York, that's right, York, kind of the same region. He in legislation recently, and it passed, and it's called Gavin's Law, saddled his teenage son to a sextortion scam. He committed suicide because of sextortion, and I would encourage anyone who is not aware of what that is, I'm sure Ms. Furness, I know Ms. Furness knows, look up sextortion and how prevalent it is. I had no idea. We had so many cases of that statewide and nationally, and I'm, you know, it goes without saying, we know we have that here too. So Gavin's Law was passed in an attempt and hope that it will help quell some of that that takes place with increasing penalties, some funding streams that will help counteract those who commit the act of sextorting someone, because y'all, I mean, it doesn't get any worse than losing a child. We all knew that. That's a worst nightmare for a parent. But anyway, all in all, was a fantastic conference. It's very well done by the School Boards Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to attend.
Thank you, Dr. King. Dr. Goodwin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, while Mr. Matthews is bringing his group up to get settled in and started, I wanted just to let you know that we invited the Teachers of the Year and our principals to attend the board meeting tonight because the progress that we're going to share is a testament to their hard work and dedication to the students of Kershaw County. The data that we're sharing tonight was embargoed until today, and I asked the State Superintendent last Thursday, was she sure it was going to be available by tonight? So, and she assured me it was, and it was. We watched her press conference earlier today. So we were unable to share it with, you know, the board and stakeholders until today. Furthermore, much of the comparison data, we just got recently to compare district and state numbers, so that came in kind of late, but everybody was trying to make sure it was accurate. After seeing this presentation, though, if there's more disaggregation that you would like us to do of this data, we will be doing more, but if you want any, you know, to be passed on, you, we'll be happy to prepare that information for you. First, I want to say our teachers, students, and staff worked really hard this year to focus on the content and skills needed to increase our performance on SC Ready and the End of Course assessments. Also want to say that the data tonight we're sharing is just a part of the journey, and it definitely is not the destination. We still have real challenges ahead of us. We still have work to do, but our assessment results show that we're getting on the right track. Now for the hard part, we've got to hold on to this hard-won momentum that we've been encountering. Second, we acknowledge that the ELA standards and the science standards are different from previous years, as are the assessments that were used to measure mastery of those standards. Somebody might think we were trying to cook the books, so we made sure that we weren't. So for that reason, we are focusing on how students improved versus how the state improved. This is the only way that we can be fair and statistically accurate in our assessment of the progress in EL and science. However, I will say, though, even if we were focusing on measured progress year over year, our results are equally encouraging. So whichever way you want to slice it, we'll slice it. In math, we will focus on how students improve versus the state, just to be consistent. However, again, if we measure progress year over year, our results are equally encouraging. Finally, at this point, we cannot with confidence predict how this data will translate into report card ratings. In fact, we just got data files just a few hours ago that will go into those report card ratings that haven't been unraveled yet. There are certain parts of the ratings that we don't, and we do not have the capability of generating a report card on our own. State report cards are due to be released in the middle of October, and we'll present our report on those results on October 21st, school board meeting. As we go through this information, I want to, before we start, again, acknowledge how much work has been done by our teachers and our students and our staff to make sure that we give the students of Kershaw County the best chance of success. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the charts and graphs, guys, and let them walk us through their presentation.
All right. To start off, we're going to let Ms. Dove, Mickey Dove, who is our new Director of Elementary Education, which some of you haven't met yet, but I want to be sure you have a chance to do that. She'll go through the initial graphs that are year-to-year comparisons. Then Ms. Corner, who's our Director of Data Analytics, will then go over our comparisons within the Midlands data, and then I'll go over some takeaways and what our next steps are. On the first page that you have, though, is a link to the whole document. So you have all of this at your fingertips whenever you want to get down in it. So with that.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board, thank you. I am honored to be here today to share the results of the good work that the teachers and students of Kershaw County have endured. So on your first page, you'll see where we're looking at third-grade ELA comparison to the State Department. And again, Dr. Goodwin mentioned that the ELA standards last year were new, the instructional materials were new, and the assessment was new as well. But you can see that overall, we had growth in all nine of our elementary schools, with six of those schools having more growth than the State Department growth. Additionally, you can see that all of our elementary schools, seven of them had surpassed, closer, sorry, not as loud, I guess I need to use my teacher voice, that seven of our schools surpassed the state average for students meeting and exceeding expectation for their, and they also ended up with double-digit growth in that area. For third-grade math, we had five of our schools who surpassed the SEE average for students meeting and exceeding, and seven of our schools showed greater growth than the state. Moving into our fourth-grade ELA, we had four schools surpassing state average, and five of our schools exceeded the state average for growth. Looking at fourth-grade math, three schools with higher percentage of students meeting and exceeding than the state average, and five schools surpassing the state with regard to growth. Moving into fifth-grade ELA, eight of our elementary schools showed growth in fifth-grade ELA, with six of them being above the state growth average, and four surpassing the state average for meets and exceeds. In fifth-grade math, five schools surpassed the state average percentage for meets and exceeds, with six of those schools showing greater growth than the state. The next two slides are looking at the cohorts of students, and so it's showing the historical growth and trends of those students, their learning progression over the last several years. Looking diagonally, you can see that in 2025, all but one cohort, the sixth grade, showed growth in ELA. And on the next slide, you can see the same cohorts, how they performed on the math SC Ready over the years. So that's just kind of a colorful little chart to show you the historical of groups of students as they progress through grade levels. And then finishing out elementary, fourth-grade science, we had, of course, this is also a new test, new standards, but you can see that our students and teachers did a great job implementing those 2021 standards. There are five of our schools that surpassed the state with regard to the number of students meeting and exceeding. So if we summarize our accomplishments in elementary school, we see that there are in all seven assessments that were administered to our elementary schools in 2024, 25, we had, we had growth that exceeded the state in all seven of those areas. And then we're moving into middle school with sixth-grade ELA. We had two schools who had more growth than the state average. And in sixth-grade math, we also had two schools demonstrating greater growth than the state average. With seventh-grade ELA, there were three of the schools that exceeded the state growth, and Lougoff Elementary, or Lougoff Middle School surpassed the state percentage for students that were meets and exceeds. In seventh-grade math, we had two schools that exceeded the state in growth. Eighth-grade ELA, two of our schools surpassed the state average for meets and exceed, and two of our schools were greater in growth than our state average growth. Eighth-grade math, there were three schools that had greater growth than the state growth, and Lougoff Elgin Middle School surpassed the state with meets and exceed percentages. Our sixth-grade science, you can see that students and teachers did a great job implementing those new 2021 standards. All of our schools, our middle schools, exceeded the state average for meets and exceed, as well as exceeding their growth over the state. The next slide shows Algebra I EOC, and this is for the cohort of students that are in middle school who would qualify to participate in Algebra I for high school credit. As you can see, two of our schools had growth, and all four had a passage rate higher than the state average. In high school, in Algebra I, three of our high schools had growth in their pass rate that exceeded the state growth average. English II, we had two schools surpassing the state passage rate, and North Central exceeded state growth average. For Biology I, two schools had greater than the state, and Lougoff Elgin High School surpassed the state pass rate. And then our US History, we had two schools with a higher passage rate and growth rate than the state. So that, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Corner. Yep?
I'd like to know if we can reserve the right to come back and ask questions about all this data since we're just now receiving it this evening. We're, with the rapid pace that we're following right now, I'm currently two pages behind, everybody?
That might be my fault, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. I really appreciate it and appreciate all the effort in getting all of this together for tonight, but I'd like to know if we would have an opportunity, should we have questions after delving in this, that we can bring this back at another meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do apologize, I couldn't have it beforehand, but we couldn't give it to you until today, so I do apologize for that. I definitely would have gotten it to you before tonight if I could have.
Not you.
All right, so in addition to comparing our averages to the state, I wanted to give you a comparison with the Midlands, just so you could see how we did compared to districts around the state. So we had, we compared ourselves with 11 other districts, and these graphs were done two ways, because I wasn't sure which way you would prefer. So the first one, we did a ranking, so you can just see a straight ranking, so everybody's numbered one through 11. And then the second one, it shows the percentage of meets and exceeds for every district. So for that one, you could just tell by the size of the graph how far we were from the ones ahead of us. So as you can see, for SC Ready Grade III ELA, we were third out of the 11 districts that we analyzed. And if you look at the second graph, you can see how far we all, we were from the first and the second. So that way you have the information two ways. For SC Ready Grade III Math, we were also third. And you could see, we really want to find out what Lancaster is doing, because they did an awesome job there, and being from Lancaster, I want to go back and see what they're doing now, so we'll definitely pay a visit there sometime this year. For SC Ready Grade IV ELA, we were fifth on that one. As you can see, Kershaw is a little lighter blue, just so your eyes are drawn there. So that's definitely an area, you know, that we want to get back in the top three on that one as well. Grade IV Math, we were fourth in that area. Grade IV Science, we were number two, behind Lancaster again. For Grade V ELA, we were number three, and usually when we're three, it's behind Lexington I and Lancaster. For Grade V Math, we were number four. And that will conclude the elementary rankings. Now moving on to middle school, sixth-grade ELA, we ranked number five. And you can see, when we get to middle school, there's a much larger distance between the top couple of rankings and when you start hitting number three. So the districts that are at the top, there's, they start moving away from the districts behind them when we hit middle school. In SC Ready Math, Grade VI, we were fourth. And once again, you can see the top two are significantly ahead of the other schools. SC Ready Grade VI Science, we actually are second there, Lex I and Lancaster tied, but, so I named them both number one, so we're second. I know technically that makes us third, but we're going to go with second. SC Ready Grade VII ELA, we were third, once again behind Lexington I and Lancaster. SC Ready Grade VII Math, we were fourth, and you can see the top two are significantly higher, and then there's not that much difference after we hit those top two. SC Ready Grade VIII ELA, we were number two, and there was not a tie for number one in that case, we were a strong number two. But you can see number one is significantly higher. And then there's an overall ranking by subject. So you can see an ELA for each grade level where we hit. So you can see where we were, we were second through fifth, depending on which grade level. In science, we were second in both, fourth and sixth. And then in math, we hit almost straight fours except third, which was a three. So that just kind of gives you an overview of those areas. So Mr. Cameron, that kind of gives it to you in a nutshell. No, that didn't help? Okay.
Still two pages behind.
Okay, well, you'll like that page when you get to it. It kind of sums it up for you. I did that one at the last minute. Algebra I EOCs, this is an area that we're still working on, we did make progress, but we ranked sixth in that area. And Fairfield rocked that one. So I know I was telling Mr. Hopkins before the meeting, we got to get out and see what Fairfield's doing, because they scored a lot higher than most districts in that area. English II EOCs, we were fourth, but in that one, the top four were pretty close. Biology I EOCs, we were also fourth. US History EOCs, we were third. And then that last page, just for Mr. Cameron, it gives our rankings in those four subject areas, and you can see we went from third to sixth in those high school subjects.
Thank you. Now some takeaways from all of this to try to bring it to a conclusion. While we do compare score growth on the ELA test and the science While we do compare score, uh, growth on the ELA test and the science test, that comparison isn't really accurate, because it's comparing different standards and different tests. However, you can compare the growth for us as a district and compared to state growth since we're looking at apples-to-apples comparisons at that point. And when comparing growth in our tested areas as compared to the states, our district exceeded the state in 16 of 18 areas, including SC Ready and EOC. Kersher County School District made gains in, over our 23, 24, in 12 out of 14 categories, scoring meet, for students scoring meets or exemplary. All of our math scores went up, increased, and over last year, and that's an apples-to-apples comparison, because that's the same test. The English and the science tests are different, because they're different standards. The math test was the same. We'll run into that this, next year with math, because new math standards this year, so that it'll be hard to compare the, hopefully the gains in the math test from this year to next year. Three of our elementary schools, Camden Elementary, North Central, and Pine Trees, saw growth in every tested area and every subject. Two, Lani and Dobie's Mill improved in six out of seven areas. As you know from last board meeting, 23 students scored the maximum score on a section of SC Ready. All four of our middle schools exceeded the state average in SC Ready Science. Lugolf Elgin Middle School improved in seven of eight tested areas. Camden and North Central Middle improved in six out of eight SC Ready areas. When you look at the colorful chart, and you're comparing cohort growth from 23, 24 to 24, 25, six out of 10 of the cohorts improved their performance from one year to the next. All of our schools increased their performance in Algebra I. Three out of four EOCs improved their, showed growth in their passage rate and exceeded the state growth. When you look at what we're going to do moving forward, we're going to have a clear and consistent focus on our Tier One, on our primary instruction through our professional learning communities, through observations, and through standard-based assessments. Focus on providing professional development and alignment from elementary through high school. Clear and consistent MTSS practices and interventions to support our Tier Two and Tier Three intervention. We'll have stronger alignment between special ed and regular ed. We'll continue to focus on our ML students, including a stronger push to achieve English proficiency in five years. If they don't, uh, achieve proficiency by that fifth year, it begins to hurt us in, in our school report card scores. We'll have professional development with all stakeholder groups, using relevant data for wraparound approach, to be sure everything's aligned. We'll do learning walks in our ELA and math classrooms, so we can better assist with our instructional practices and resource and professional development. And again, targeted professional development support on our new math standards and instructional materials that are all brand-new this year, just like we did last year with our ELA. And I'd like to take a personal note and thank the principals and the teachers in this room. None of this happens without your very hard work, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Y'all kicked butt. Thank you so much for what you did. With that, other than Mr. Cameron, who can ask questions next time, any questions for us?
Dr. Goodman, you want to go before questions?
If that would be okay, and then certainly we'll take any questions, and we'll, we'll also take any questions that you have, you know, for a future board meeting. I will say that, that we broke this up this year, obviously, we did AP and scores and, and all earlier. Then last meeting, we, we brought you another set of, of, you know, another set of data. Tonight, we bring you this, and then at the October 16th board meeting, we'll bring, or October 21st, we'll bring you the state report cards, because as you recall, it really was overwhelming when we waited to do it all at one time. So we, we've broken it up. But much different discussion now, because the discussion now is, is how do you maintain the momentum and make sure that we do that? Well, one of the things that, that we have to do, it's easy to pick off what you call the low-hanging fruit and then move forward, but now what you have to do is look at all of your levels of instruction, because it becomes very important that you do your gifted and talented students, and you do things well there, and then that you do your other students who, who are, you know, like I was, definitely middle-of-the-pack, certainly not in that high-flying group, and then also students who struggle. You, you can't just focus on one area, you've got to focus on all of them. And I know they're not prepared to do that, and, you know, this is a testament to their hard work over the past year, and we've seen nothing but a great start in that direction for this year. We're already an eighth of the way through the school year now. That's kind of hard to say out loud, but we're an eighth of the way through the school year, so we're, we're really pushing now. So again, congratulations to them on their hard work, but now, as my dad would tell me, "All right, now get back and get to work," is what he would say, so, but we'll take any questions that you have.
Dr. King?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. I'm a 31-year educator, principal of a bunch of schools in the district, because I couldn't keep a job at one place. I don't ever recall this, this much positivity with regard to test results in our district in my whole career and as a principal. Number one, we've got to change Dr. Corner's name to Dr. Data. Gives me a headache looking at all these numbers, but I'm, I'm impressed. And we have our Teacher of the Year in here, Randy Ray, who is truly exemplary, but y'all, we have Teachers of the Year in our district everywhere, just like her. And I, I got to give a shout-out to my, my compatriots back there, who, many of them who I worked with. We, we have the staffs in place, but it takes leaders like them to get the staff, to follow them, to see where we need to go and what we need to do to get there. So, big, big shout-out, as Mr. Matthews, to our principals, unsung heroes every day, and our district leaders as well. You, you know, it does not go unnoticed. And, and just anecdotally, as an old retired guy, I like to get out and ride in my Harley every once in a while and, and take care of my honeydews. I can't tell you how many times since school has started that I have gone by a school facility, and, and I'm talking four or five, because I ride around all over the place. 4:30, 5 o'clock, 5:30, there are always cars in the parking lot, in the teacher staff parking lot, and the principal spot is almost always still filled. So these folks aren't putting in 35 hours a week. I know the principals, they put in 50, 60, and more, and our teachers, a lot of them do the same thing, so y'all salute, prayers for continued growth and effort. Thank you for what you do every day, and thanks to, to our teachers and our support staff as well. Outstanding.
Mr. Jean?
Thanks, you covered all of that, that was one of my notes there, so, yes, thank you, everybody that's involved with that. One quick thing that I, I would like to see is a breakdown, I, I know we did a regional breakdown here with 11 different districts, I'd like to see us compared to more districts like us in the state of South Carolina to see where we fit.
Not a problem.
Coach?
Really don't have a question, everybody. I just want to say thank you to everybody in here, all administration, teachers, everything you've been doing, it's outstanding insofar as my opinion is concerned, and I just want to take an opportunity to say thank you. I represent the North Central side of the county, and we've got some outstanding educators and all of our, throughout our county, but I'm extremely proud of the North Central side, as you're a little biased, but I appreciate everything y'all do. And I just want to say thank you for the improvement that you're making, and the difference you're making in our students.
With that being said, I just want to say, probably one of the best reports I've heard since serving on the board about eight, nine years, and the way that we do it is, stand up and show your appreciation to these people out here.
Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss resignation and retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, assignment changes and transfer of certified and classified personnel? Proper motion by Ms. Furnace, second by Mr. Roberts, all in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
It's done.